All right, call to the school board meeting, ISD 361 roll call. Mike Holden.
Here.
Michelle Hebner.
Here.
Tony Corpey.
Here.
Jennifer Windows.
Here.
Ted Saxton, here. Terry Murray.
Here.
Roxanne Skifstedde Deitch.
Here.
Kevin Grover.
Here.
And we'll talk about the student rep, I'm sure. Pledge of allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
Someone, second.
I got a motion by Michelle and a second by Tony. For further discussion from me, I had to pull number six, which is approve hire of Stephen Windows as assistant girls basketball coach. And we're gonna move it to action item four on the action item section. That way Jen can vote on the consent agenda. Any further discussion, Kevin?
No.
All right, here, no further discussion. Call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries unanimously. Open forum, presentation of Elk's September Student of the Month, Holly Wold and Jacob Erickson. Or do you want me to read the next one to them?
No, that's fine. I'll start with Holly. Holly Wold is the Elk's September Female Student of the Month. Holly is a very dedicated and passionate student athlete who is devoted to helping others. She is a member of the Minnesota Honor Society and currently holds the secretary position. Holly has been on the principal's list, received academic excellence awards, and been enrolled in concurrent enrollment classes throughout her high school career. She is also very involved in extracurricular activities as a member of our volleyball, basketball, and track and field teams, and is the captain of both basketball and track and field. When not involved in academics and athletics, Holly has been a teacher's assistant at Falls Elementary, is an active member at St. Falls Lutheran Church, and has been involved in a variety of activities in the community. She has held part-time jobs babysitting and working at her grandparents' farm during the summer. Holly is planning to attend a four-year university in the fall to pursue a degree in the human resource field. Holly Wold, the Elk's September Female Student of the Month. Jacob Erickson is the Elk's September Male Student of the Month. Jacob is a member of the Minnesota Honor Society and is the president. He has been on the A honor roll and principal's list throughout his high school career. Along with maintaining excellent grades in the classroom, Jacob has been very involved with his musical talents, playing piano for church, weddings, funerals, concerts, and recitals. He has received numerous awards for his performing arts talents. Jacob is a very intelligent and respectful student to have in the classroom. He leads by example, as he is a captain for both the cross-country and track and field teams. Additionally, he also is a member of the hockey team. Jacob is also very involved in the community as a volunteer for numerous activities. He works for his family business, Erickson's Lawn Care, and is also a certified referee for USA Hockey. Next year, he plans to attend a four-year university to double major in chemical engineering and music performance as a pianist. Jacob Erickson, the Elk's September Male Student of the Month. Katie Ruport.
Do you want me to read the open forum presentation of Elk's?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, of Elk's October Students of the Month, Katie Ruport and Benjamin Skifsted.
Thank you. Katie Ruport is the Elk's October Female Student of the Month. Katie is an exceptional student who has always challenged herself both in and out of the classroom. She has also been an honor student and received academic excellence awards the last two years. Outside of the classroom, Katie is a member of the volleyball team and is a hockey cheerleader. She was also involved with Dancing with Darcy through ninth grade and received her ten-year award. Katie is a member of the Minnesota Honor Society and is currently our Honor Society historian. When not being actively involved at school, she volunteers for numerous activities in the community. Katie currently works as the manager at Cine5 and also as a server at the River Golf Course. She is planning to attend the University of Minnesota Duluth in the fall to pursue a degree in business and get licensed as an... I know I was gonna have a tough time.
Esthetician.
Esthetician, focusing on skincare. Katie Ruport, the Elk's October Female Student of the Month. Benjamin Skifsted is the Elk's October Male Student of the Month. Ben is an outstanding student and role model in our school. He is a member of our student council and is currently the president. Ben has enrolled in concurrent enrollment classes at Falls High School and has been on the A honor roll and principal's list throughout his high school career. Along with maintaining excellent grades in the classroom, Ben is very involved in athletics. He is on our cross-country hockey and track and field teams. Additionally, Ben has been involved in the community by helping at the Rivers Edge Villa, Shield 616, and activities at his church. During the summer months, he works as a dockhand at the Thunderbird. Next year, he plans to attend a college to major in mechanical engineering. After completing his four-year degree, Ben will look to continue his education and pursue a master's in aerospace engineering and work for a company in the space industry such as NASA, SpaceX, or Boeing. Benjamin Skifsted, the Elk's October Male Student of the Month. Yes.
Yeah, great job. Moving on to public open forum, is anybody here for public open forum? All right. All right, moving on to consent agenda. Approved past meeting minutes for the regular school board meeting on September 16th and special school board meeting on September 24th. Approved current accounts payable in amount due of $1,358,847. And my pennies are missing on here, because of the way it's printed, and some pennies.
Yes, I love it. Mine is.
Oh, okay. Approved payroll in amount of $401,178.42 for pay period September 27th and October 11th. Acknowledged Jamie Hill and Maria Cowman as prom advisors. Acknowledged Jonathan McDonald and Brady Jelly as volunteer boys hockey coaches. Accept the resignation of Brian Kelly effective 10/25/19. Approved leave request of Beth Reeler, paraprofessional. From the dates listed, due to not enough PTO. Approved hire of Kevin Scholl as regular route bus driver pending background check. Approved agreement with Justin's for school yearbook. Approved hire of Eric Walls as head boys baseball coach for the 2020 season. Approved hire of Will Avi as assistant boys baseball coach for the 2020 season. Approved hire of Cheryl Hendrickson for head girls track coach for the 2020 season. Approved hire of Alicia Hendrickson for assistant girls track coach for the 2020 season. Approved hire of Paul Jelly as head boys track coach for the 2020 season. Approved hire of Dan Zika for assistant boys track coach for the 2020 season. Approved the hire of Tony Cass Reddell for head golf coach for the 2020 season. Approved the hire of Sarah Peterson as assistant golf coach for the 2020 season. Approved the hire of Shelby Noson for head girls softball coach for the 2020 season. Approved the hire of Jeff Carey as assistant girls softball coach for the 2020 season. First reading of school board policy 806, crisis management policy. First reading of school board policy 529, staff notification of violent behaviors by students. First reading of school board policy 208, development, adoption, and implementation of policies. First reading of school board policy 402, disability nondiscrimination policy. First reading of school board policy 410, family medical leave policy. First reading of school board policy 415, mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults. First reading of school board policy 420, students and employees with infectious diseases. Number 28, accept the resignation of Rachel Omdal, community ed advisor, effective November 4th, 2019. Undertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Mike and a second by Roxanne. Further discussion?
First of all, thank you to Brian and Rachel for their service. Wish them both the best in the future here. Number eight, I just wanted you kind of aware, Ms. Reeler is a paraprofessional. Tim Missy and I had conversation in the last month with regards to this. It's one of those that you wanna do what's right, well, I shouldn't say do what's right. She needs an extended period of time, I'm assuming, I don't know this, but for a vacation that is planned. It was not done prior, you know, and the question is, do we, you know, part of me wants to say no, you know, you come work, you have your time off, that, you know, you're, and she will use her other leave in this, but on the flip side, we struggle to, you know, get, I'm gonna say, good people that, I mean, she comes and works every day, you know, type deal, and so we're kinda caught in a rock and a hard place. You know, I'm just being honest with you. We have the right to say no. I don't know if you lose an employee or not, you know, it's one of those, and so, we didn't have a good answer, and I don't have a good, you know.
Is this her first year?
Second.
Second, okay, so newer?
Yeah, newer, you know, and it was just, we don't know where, you know, I mean, you know what I'm saying, I mean, we've...
Okay.
So, we put it on there and felt, let's go, you know, to be honest, let's go with it and see where it goes. Like I said, I can understand the other side of it too, that, you know, we all have XMO to leave, and we want people, and we want them here, you know, that's, the kids need them here, but on the flip side, you know, things come from time to time. If it was the same person year after year, I think I would say probably differently, you know, I mean, everyone doesn't get, it's not a month, it's pushing three weeks or whatever. So, I mean, it's not much guidance for you, but that's your...
Well, you got it here, I might consent agenda for that.
Is this one of those situations where she has to pay herself?
No, not for teachers.
Oh, okay.
You know, like for their, personally, those five days, they do pay. For paras, they just don't get paid, and we pay the sub, you know, type deal. So, cost-wise, it's not really much different. She'll take time without pay, which...
Okay.
Good.
I would just like to talk in support of giving her the leave, because I think, as Kevin said, you know, you wanna keep good employees, and, you know, small town, we don't have a lot to offer in terms of anything for, you know, you just don't get that kind of pay, that kind of thing, and I just think that, I know I try to treat paras and people who really are in the trenches, working hard, as good as I can, and I'd like to support that she gets her leave.
Well, that's how it's listed on the consent agenda, so if we all go for it, that's what's gonna happen, because on the consent agenda, you're generally not supposed, you're supposed to ask clarifying questions, right?
Oh, sorry.
No, so you're fine, I mean, I think that everybody's probably gonna think the same way, but I would also like to just say, I don't, I didn't know Brian, but Rachel Omdal, our past kinda overlapped quite a bit, and she'll be missed in this community, and wherever, we wish her luck for future endeavors to, you know, be hard to replace. Any, anything else on, anything else, okay. Here, none, we'll call the consent agenda to vote. We have a motion by Mike and a second by Roxanne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries unanimously. Moving on to action item number one, resolution to acceptance of gifts and donations. Need a motion?
Someone.
A second. Got a motion by Jen and a second by Terry. Resolution for acceptance of gifts and donations, whereas school board policy 706 establishes the guidelines for acceptance of gifts or donations to the district, whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of district educational programs through gifts or donations that meet goals and objectives of the school district, whereas Minnesota statute 465.03 states that the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved that the school board of International Falls Public School ISD 361 accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. District donations received, athletic touchscreen from Darrell Schmidt, $3,000. From Larry and Alice Manasa, $3,000. From Howard Levine, $3,000. From James and Mary Rolando, $3,000. From Margaret and Chris Cuffincam, $3,000. From Stuart and Susan Norquist, $3,000. From Bruce and Shirley Schmidt, $3,000. From Alan and Gail Rasmussen, $3,000. For the Bronco Hall of Fame, from Donna Musich, in memory of Adeline Wood, $25. From Stuart and Susan Norquist, $500. PCA Mill of International Falls to Falls Athletics, $4,050. To Minnesota Honor Society, $2,500. To sixth grade spring trip, $2,500. Huddle software from volleyball boosters, $700. From girls hockey boosters, $500. From football boosters, $394.87. From basketball boosters, $3,000. From softball boosters, $300. Falls Education Foundation to Falls High School, $7,637.44. To Falls Elementary School, $5,486.99. Project Read from Ivan and Marcia Stewart, in honor of Gail Rasmussen, $80. End-of-the-year FES Carnival from Holy Trinity Episcopal Church, $400. Arena Weight Room Project, weightlifting equipment from Terry and Shirley Burns, from Bronco Boys Hockey Boosters, $500. From Bronco Girls Hockey Boosters, $500. Oh, I see that, the one right there, for weightlifting equipment from, that's the equipment is what was donated. Used John Deere gator from Bronco Football Boosters, $1,800. FHS Weight Room Volt Program from Girl Swim Boosters, $158.90.
Yeah, that was...
What did I...
It wasn't on yours, but it's right here.
Oh, is this more updated?
From Alan and...
From Alan and Gail Rasmussen, was in memory of Eric Rasmussen for $3,000. Thank you. All right, I've got a motion and a second.
If I can just make a couple comments. First of all, the touchscreen project is one I talked to you a little bit about last month, and it is fully funded and moving forward, and, and again, I think it's a great idea. Came originally from the Hall of Fame, Bronco Hall of Fame group, looking at putting something in to memorialize, and, you know, you could look at, you know, either your videos of their programs, or the bios, different things, but as we started talking about it, I guess I saw a lot more opportunity from putting like all our yearbooks on there, because they're all in a PDF format now, and we just started seeing, you know, it's more than athletics, and so it grew into, and again, Tim Ringhoffer was the one that kinda got the idea going. Stuart Nordquist is the one that, when it came across his path, said, I'd get the money for that, and I told you last time, we weren't in favor of, you know, going door-to-door for our businesses necessarily, and they asked for the okay. I think it was on a Friday night, I was at the shack, and I got a text from Mr. Ringhoffer, and said Stuart would have the money on Monday, and I just thought, whatever, and they did. There was one more added, originally they were going for $21,000. The unit itself is $18,500 with subscription and all that. We've been in contact, Jack Carsney is the one that did like the casing for the Hall of Fame one, and has done several of them, so we want the stuff to match and look good. So, it's actually gonna go in one of the display cases, the first one, as you walk in on your left-hand side, and it'll go in the center of that, there'll be a frame built-in, and then there'll be some smaller spots for trophies on each side, so it's not creating a new... And they also have hopes, and the reason they went one more donation group is of taking all of our trophies and actually taking a digital picture of each one, because we have a whole room of trophies stored here. You know, their third place is, consolation that, but get it all in, and the sky's the limit on what can be put in there. It's not the daily announcements type, you know, thing, this is more historic, like, if we want to record the Minnesota Honor Society banquet, they could have a, you know, link, if that's what you wanna call it, in a spot in there, and you could have every year, you did, you know, a lot of it's gonna be built over time, so to speak, but it's just remarkable, and hats off to the group, and it's exciting to see it move forward, and if you notice, it's eight teachers, or teachers or spouses or whatever, giving back. Also, and again, everyone on here, week in, or month in, month out, is, you know, just remarkable. Falls Ed Foundation, again, another roughly 13,000 that they donated, and they're actually looking at doing two rounds this year of another one in the spring, PCA, I mean, everyone's just remarkable, so, thank you very much. To the community.
Yeah, that's a lot of donations this time around that we're approving, so thank you very much to the community. Okay, I got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries unanimously. All right, moving on to approve resolution, school board supporting Form A application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation. And let's see, here we go. Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts, whereas the district 361 school board recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities, and whereas the MSHSL Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist school districts in recognizing, promoting, and funding extracurricular participation by high school students in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore, be it resolved that the International Falls School Board supports the district application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form A grant to offset student activity fees. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Got Mike and Terry. Any further discussion? Here, none, call to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries unanimously. Accept proposal from Shannon's Inc. for $50,000 for RFP dated 9/17/19 for boiler air exchange work at Falls Elementary. I need a motion?
Someone. Second.
A motion by Michelle and a second by Roxanne. All right, further discussion?
If I can, I did put a summary together for you, there were six, six companies, which, again, my heart is very happy that we got more than, you know, one or two. It did, you know, I'll be honest, it was the effort of going out and trying to encourage, and it obviously, you know, paid off in one extent. I think we would be happy, for the most part, with, you know, probably any one of them, to be honest, but one sticks out, and it is the local company, and I'll be honest, at first, when we opened them and went through them, thought something isn't right here, you know, because it's just, it's not, if you wanna say, in the game compared to most of the others. So, I did go have a conversation with Mr. Ebig to make sure, because I was not part of the walkthrough when that group did it, and it was them and this, a person from Design Group Incorporated out of Chisholm, and they walked through and supposedly understood what was asked, but it's like, when you expect the vehicle, you're getting a quote from, to be $30,000, and it comes in at $10,000, you know, and you start going, what's wrong? So, anyway, we had a very good conversation. I walked through the proposal to make sure, you know, him and one of his employees understood, you know, or we were on the same page, and yep, 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 everything, yep, and we'll do that, and we'll do this, and kinda got towards the end, and pretty much came out and said that, for the most part, what they are bidding is money that'll go to Design Group for the engineering services, and the rest, they're kind of, in essence, donating to the community, wanting the project to go forward. Now, with that said, it does not guarantee, we're gonna have to be careful so that we do not cross the fine points of the law, if you will, because they do plan on bidding. So, the plan is, and this is the way it's understood, and I want you to understand, is they're going to work with us, design the project, with the engineering coming from that Design Group. We will actually have to bid it then. They will have all the specs, you know, everything that you need. You know, just say we go do boilers, or if we decide to refurbish our boilers, they will design, you know, what we decide to do as a group, and put the specs together. We're gonna then have to put it out, we'll probably have to have, you know, like Mr. Lukacek or someone help us with the language, and I put a little caveat in here, so that, because they can't, in essence, design, put all the bid stuff together, and possibly get to work, you know, there's a little restriction there. And then, I put, we may need a little bit of help when we look at our financing piece, whether we use ailers that we've used other times, or there's other groups in here that, you know, and again, it's not a, you know, $100,000 piece, I bet it could be $5,000, $10,000, you know, type deal, but it's, it's again, a very good feeling that, you know... And again, they've done the majority of work, they do good work, you know, there's not gonna, one of the groups would've been good, but it is what it is, so I do recommend that we move forward with the understanding we will have to bid and piece a couple of things, a little bit different than if it would've been an ICS, or KFI, or LHB, but it's nowhere in the ballparks of roughly, you know, $50,000 compared to $200, so, it's good.
Any further discussion on this? All right, here, none, we'll call it to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries unanimously. Action item number four, approve hire of Stephen Windows for assistant girls basketball coach. Undertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Mike and a second by Rox. Any further discussion? Then we pulled up to put it here, so Jen can abstain. Here, none, we'll call it to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
All right, moving on to administrative reports. Melissa Tate, elementary principal.
I have a little longer report this month, we've had a lot of things going on, and I've been asked to share some specific things, so bear with me. We have 507 students now, we lost one student, they moved out of the area, so we're down one from last month. We had parent-teacher conferences on October 8th and 10th, and were well-attended by families. On October 10th, I conducted a training for paras. From Falls Elementary School, this training covered topics such as Falls Elementary School vision, relationship building, supporting students and being their cheerleader, as well as resource supervision, logistics, rules, et cetera. The training was well-received by paras and everyone. Everyone but two paras were in attendance at the training, so it was really good attendance. I'd like to continue to probably do this a few times a year, just, it's a good time to touch base with all the paras, that's uninterrupted. I received many comments from the paras that it was helpful, and they felt like part of the team, so they were very appreciated and participated fully in the training, so it was a good training. Early outs for October. On the first Wednesday of the month, we always do committees at Falls Elementary School, and that's where we break into groups, and we work on things such as carnival, relay recess, the PBIS team meets, the school leadership team meets, just a bunch of different committees to kinda keep things running at Falls Elementary School. On October 9th, teachers had time to work on learning targets and success criteria. As we've added an area this year at the elementary school, it would be science that we were adding. Last Wednesday on the 16th, we did our child study team, and that's something that we do every other month, and so that's something where we break into teams, or in whole group, the whole group together, and we talk about at-risk kids, and maybe develop interventions for them, and talk about if they would need to move on for a special referral, if interventions have already been done and not successful, that sort of thing. On 10/23 this Wednesday, we'll be having a data meeting, and that's where grade levels will meet to look at their STAR data. We're starting to do monthly STAR progress now, so they'll look at some of the reports we learned from with Sue Akri, and kind of group their kids and talk about interventions... and kind of group their kids and talk about interventions that they can use for their kids. And then at the end of the month, we'll be doing, uh, one of our book studies this year will be Kids Deserve It by Todd Nusselny and Adam Welkam, Pushing Boundaries and Challenging Conventional Thinking. And it's just talking about, um, taking risks in the classroom and in the community with families and students. Talks about being kids cheerleaders because you, you know, you don't know what kids are coming in the door with, so that everybody needs a cheerleader. Talks a lot about relationships and things like that. So, this will be our first book study of the year. And our early outs for November are very similar, committees, learning targets, data meeting and a book study without, we don't have the TAT team meeting that month. So, every other month, we would have the TAT team meeting. So, um, let's see, on October tenth, we also had, um, teachers in grade K through five participate in a staff training with Sue Akri. And she covered things like MCA test preparation. She talked about like the rigor that the actual tests are written at and that was very surprising for a lot of the staff. So, she talked about interventions to approach that. Um, she gave us different reports from STAR, which we'll be doing monthly now. She talked about interventions with the younger grades. She talked about phonemic awareness. Um, she talked about using data to adjust our instruction. And she also, when we, when her and I looked at our scores together at Falls Elementary Scores, she just wanted me to, she said that we need to celebrate because she said Falls Elementary is actually doing really well. Like our scores are continuing to stay above the state average when the state average scores are declining. So, staff as well as she wanted me to just let you guys know that they're doing a good job. So, there's that. And then, um, in computer classes, you know, there's been a lot of talk with the tech stuff, what's happening and, um, currently, we have multiple computer teachers teaching at the elementary school. And I recently, um, reached out to the MESSA group just to kind of see what schools are using, just because when we have multiple teachers, we have distorted lessons and we have, it's not always vertically aligned and they don't have time to talk to one another when we don't have a canned curriculum. So, um, most of the schools are not using a canned curriculum. They're mostly using like the national standards and then our website called code.org, which all the lessons are free on code.org and it for sure covers K through five. I didn't look at the older stuff that it covers, but I asked all of my computer teachers to, to take this month to review code.org and to begin to implement it this year. So, we can at least get kids experience, uh, experiencing some coding and some consistency from grade to grade. So, there is a need for time for the computer teachers to come together to review the standards and lessons, to vertically align and map out the best attack for students across grade levels. Um, so I'll continue to look for research or for curriculum and I'll continue to talk to the principals to see what other groups are doing, but I think the the biggest need is probably time just for them to come together to talk about what they're all covering because I think some teachers are covering the same thing and that's what happens when we have multiple teachers without really a set plan. So, that's something we need to be working on. Um, October is bully awareness month, so we started the month of, of October with positivity, positive sticky notes. So, that's where kids are just, um, on the first day of October, every child came to school and they had a positive message waiting for them on their desk from their teacher. So, it was individualized and they felt good. And then teachers talked to kids about, um, lifting other kids up. And so, they've been writing positive sticky notes to other people in the school, whether it be secretaries or custodians or cooks or their friends or friends out in other classrooms. And the kids really like it. It's nice to hear, hear them getting excited about writing positive notes. It's been kind of like pennyworth. Um, they feel really excited about pennyworth too, but this is, you know, saying that kind of things to one another. With that being said, we also have Wear Orange on October twenty-third. That's Wednesday. We have started our, our Students of the Month thing. We phased away from the Bronco Pride Citizenship Awards. And I think I talked about that at another board meeting. We just wanted the chance to recognize more students. We weren't able to recognize as many students as we should be with the Bronco Pride Citizenship Awards, so we are doing Students of the Month. And then they're recognized, they earn a Bronco bag. Then they have public recognition. They'll be in our newsletter. They'll get a special treat with myself sometime over the month. And then they'll be highlighted on our Facebook page individually. Um, let's see, I'm just about done. We've had a busy month. We held Walk to School Day on October second. It was a successful, successful event with parents and community participation. We started last month, our Falls Elementary School newsletter, Bronco Chronicles, went out for the first time. And that will go out monthly on the last Thursday of each month. So, if you guys are hearing information or like get, keep getting asked the same question and feel like it's something that needs to be put in the newsletter, if you could get me that information the week prior, so I have time to add it to the newsletter, that would be helpful. And our last thing, we also, um, in recognizing Students of the Month, we also have a Staff of the Month program now at Falls Elementary School and any staff can nominate a a staff member. And it can be any staff member, custodian, secretaries, para's, anybody. And we choose five a month and they get a little award, a little homewinder award that we will, um, pass around the school and then they get their special treats that we have, they gave me their list from. And that idea came from Jerry Brooks for the special treats. So, um, I just wanted to share those staff with you and what their nomination. The nomination cannot be anonymous and you have to write a paragraph about that person, why you not want to nominate them. And then we recognize them at the staff meeting also at Falls Elementary School, but I wanted to share with you what people were saying about them because we really have some awesome staff at Falls Elementary School and I think that you need to hear what they're doing. So, our first one was Ted Hago and he's a paraprofessional. And he was nominated by Heidi Carey, who's also a paraprofessional. And she said about Ted, "I believe Ted is so worthy of this award of Staff of the Month. Ted always knows when to lend a helping hand in any situation. No matter what job he's given, he handles it with great integrity and calmness. Ted's calming demeanor, smiling face and humor brings joy, joy to those around him. Ted has a high standard of work ethic and it is an honor to work alongside Ted." A lot of the kids call him Teddy Bear. He's, the kids really like him. Missy Walls was another staff member recognized. She's a preschool teacher. And she was recognized by Seth Edison. And he said, "I have the opportunity to observe Missy directly during our co-teaching period this year. She has welcomed me to her classroom and respects me as a peer. She has a very difficult class, several behaviors to manage. Nearly one-third of her class is on IEPs. Her classroom management adapted well to her new class while maintaining academic standards for her high flyers. She is accepting in time, but demonstrates clear-cut authority and expectations. She's a great teacher and creates the Bronco pride base that students build upon in later years." Lori Humbert was our next staff and she's our secretary, one of our secretaries. She was nominated by Jody Hamilton. She said, "Lori is so wonderful to work with. She is always positive, upbeat and kind. She is never frustrated when we ask her for help. Lori is happy to see students and staff. She keeps things super organized and we can always count on her." Jenny Taylor, a special education teacher who was new to Falls Elementary School. She came from the high school and she was nominated actually by two staff. Um, the first one being Heather Evil. And she said, "Jenny has been a wonderful addition to the FES staff. She jumped right in and has an open door. Her knowledge and expertise and love for kids shows. Thank you Jenny for coming to FES with an open-minded, positive attitude." And Terry Mason said about Jenny, "Jenny jumped right into our FES family with helping hands and a warm smile. I appreciate all of her support with our students and staff." And then our last staff of the month is, um, our secretary Jamie Howell. And she was also nominated by Jody Hamilton. And she said, "Jamie is a friendly frontline person who greets us each day. She cares about others. Jamie is kind. She's able to handle many crisis situations with calmness. Jamie goes above and beyond in her duties. She's super organized. We are so lucky to have her." And that's it. That's all I got. Thank you, Jenna.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate the long, I shouldn't say it like that. I appreciate all your information. I was gonna say the long report, but that didn't, sorry. Appreciate all your information. Um, and it was all very valuable. Let's see, moving on to, I'm assuming Timmy Riston is next up on the agenda.
Yes, mine is short. Okay, our current enrollment is at five fifty-five. We're down two from last month and we're down six from last year this time. And the first quarter is Friday, November first. We have an aftercare meeting tomorrow at two thirty at BACAS. And the hope is we're going to, we're in the process of identifying grants and, and funding sources and identifying activities so we can start writing grants and getting some money. And like I said before, Pi has agreed to be fiscal agents for that money. So, we're kind of excited to get that started. And for our next board meeting, just to mention that Friday, November fifteenth is an exchange day for teachers, for parent teacher conferences, so there's no school. And that's all I have.
The aftercare program is at the aftercare, not after-school program, it's after?
It's aftercare. It's, we're over at BACAS and that's the group that met with Ringo the Recovery and...
All right, I know which one you're talking about. I just wanted to clarify because I think we were talking at one point about doing something after school too. All right, uh, next up, Kevin Grover, superintendent.
Okay, several of these things that are listed there kind of rolled together. Um, I did give you a sheet here in which, um, I kind of outlined, I guess, what I see as, I'm gonna say, A, some sub-points to the goals that were set, um, last month, super technicals. The first one, or the first, yeah, number one, are the two pieces that, um, the QOC group put together. And has been submitted to the state. It is not necessarily approved yet, but it is based on the STAR program for reading and math. Our students, grades two through ten will be tested, um, well, multiple times a year. But the end, you know, whether you make it or not, comes in the second semester. And there's, I'm gonna say, an or, or two-piece to it because there's, there's several ways of looking at the scores. It's different than meat mixing. So, the first part is goal for reading is that seventy-five percent of our students in grade two through ten will either test above the fortieth percentile, spring scaled score marked during second semester of the school year. And where, you know, that first fortieth percentile seems low, but that is the rate that, and Tim and Missy can help me, predicts, um, meeting the MCA. Okay, so it correlates in that range. Where we came up with seventy-five percent is we went back and looked at where we've been with the kids that have tested over the last few years, mainly elementary. And then we did bring it down, I don't remember if it's four percent, five, because we have no data at the high school. You know what I'm saying? As the group goes up, um, the only group that's ever done STAR testing is the math reading kids. And it's not fair to look at just that group. So, we feel it is in the ballpark. Or, student can make it that way, or have this SGP at or above the fortieth percentile. And SGP is a different measurement. So, those two together have to be at seventy-five percent, three-fourths of our kids make. And we feel, and again, the group as a whole is not writing a goal that we think, you know, um, is too high, but it's also not too low. And the same type deal goes for the, the, the math goal. And, um, it's worth a try. Something different to look at. I agree, our scores, as Missy's talked about, we've talked about several times. Um, they have went in a positive direction. There's always room for growth and, um, that's what we're trying. So, that's the first piece. The second piece here, and I, it goes in, into, um, you know, when we start talking, looking at the short and long-range goals. I attached two documents in there for you to look at as a starting point of, that is where the Blue Ribbon Panel started. The first document, I think it's the first one, if I've got them in the right order, the thinner, was, was the generic document. And then the second one was with several different revisions. And it starts looking messy, but I'll be honest with you, as we did something, I tried using a different symbol in there. And it kind of, if you read down, is where we were at. Plan now would be, at least in my mind, again, I would like to convene and get some, you know, stakeholder meaning bigger than just our group input. But I guess my thought would be possibly we should do a working session or two and look and see what, you know, what we want. I mean, if there's things that we definitely, you know, no should be on there or whatever. And then at some point, maybe have, um, again, anything can go in. But have a, kind of not just open meeting for the public, but, but have a, you know, a couple of sessions or something where they can come in and give some input. Here's what we're looking at. What else would you like to see? And again, there's no guarantees. I mean, we can all have an individual, you know, item we would like done. We're looking, I think, bigger, you know, um, strategic plan type deal. So, that is what those two documents were, is to kind of let everyone look at, um, several of you were involved with that, but some were not. And then the, the third piece that I'm just gonna put is a tech update, um, the, I'm gonna say tech committee. Anyone is, again, welcome to attend. Um, it's been a fairly small group. We've met twice for the most part. And I'm just about finished with putting a summary together for our survey we did in the spring. A lot of the stuff that's on there in one way, way, shape or form has been that and we're gonna portray that. But also then to, um, bring it to you as well as, as the people that responded. I think if people fill out a survey, it's worth our time or it's our diligence, at least to give them input back on what, what came in. And then, um, keep monitoring. We, um, we did talk about next steps. Um, one of the things, um, that Missy talked about is curriculum was, um, was talked about last time a little bit as well as, um, there's a few small items that are very minimal cost-wise that we will, will obtain. The one that sticks in my head was the document camera. I think there were three requests for it. Um, it's, you know, things like that, we, we can handle right off the bat, so to speak. But I think it, it says a lot. And then, um, Mike, Casey and I will also work on just a regular tech plan, which is a piece of it. But, um, and then keep going to see as the year goes on where we think we need to go. Does that make sense? Kind of those three. And again, I don't know if people want things added. This was just, I guess, my little notes that I'd put together and I would have attached it, but forgot about it until Ted said something. What's your thoughts on the, the strategic plan, this Blue Ribbon Panel, whatever you want to call it? Do you think that is a good process to, to, like us look, take, take some time, look at the two documents? For the most part, you need to look at the second one. But I thought giving you the original is a starting point. And, um, I mean, should we set?
So, the idea is to just have maybe to start off with two work sessions?
Well, something like that. And again, I go back to, we can bring the mission and vision back. You know, that's where that group started originally from. I personally don't know, I mean, we can look at the mission and vision statement of the district. I don't know if that's completely outdated or not. You know, we spent, and Jen, Michelle, I don't remember Mike.
My house.
I mean, we spent
Yeah.
Months on that mission and vision statement. And again, we can, I mean, at any time, you can go back and start if we think our mission and vision need to change. I personally would rather spend the time on, you know, the...
Than words, Smith and a couple paragraphs, yeah.
Correct. And so, I think it's worth, uh, worth looking at those, um, things. There's personally some things I think that are pretty well completed. There's other things that I think still have some avenues that they need to grow in, you know. And, and then there probably should be some new things that come up, you know. I mean, roughly five years, things do change a little bit. So, I guess I'm, yeah, I'm thinking at least us starting with, whether it's a working session, tool, whatever it takes to kind of get what we see. And again, that can always change, you know. If we get input, because I think input from the community is very vital. You know, here's a draft of what we see. We now want your input. And not to say, you know, sometimes giving that out, you know, but maybe you ask for input first and then add to what we have. I don't, you know, I, you know, if you send document in front of me, sometimes that's the way my mind goes and I don't mean to do that, you know, to the public. But have something, and I haven't, some places have done, you know, coffee with the board or different things. Something that we want to have a conversation, you know, and open for ideas. It's not a long-term commitment. Come, you know, come give us your ideas. What would you like to see? You know, what, what can we do better? You know, whatever. I don't know what the best venue for that is, but that, I guess, was my thought.
Any suggestions or do we want to work out a date and?
I mean, I'd rather get going, I'm not saying fast, but, you know, but I don't want to wait till, you know, March to start.
Well, let's work, yeah, let's work on a, a date for at least, uh, one in the month of November, right? If we can't do two. Try to have them at various times. Is that the plan?
Well, I, I want to have a...
Oh, it's deer season?
Yeah.
Gotta avoid hunting season.
Deer season.
Otherwise, it'll just be me and Rox sitting here.
Kevin, I like your idea of start with a work session for us. There's a certain organizing and clarifying where we've been and so we can have that conversation, maybe?
Work session and decide a path forward then? Okay.
Would you open to do in the first week of December? And, and I know it's a month away. I'm just, I, I, I would like as many to meet here as possible.
That probably makes sense.
Sounds good.
Well, or, yeah, whatever, or next week, I guess. Your call.
Yeah, I, I could do the first of December or the first week of December. Anytime, you guys pick and whoever's got the most difficult schedule, you start.
I got surgery on Wednesday, December third.
So, it's Tuesday or Thursday?
Shoulder surgery.
Do you got it on Wednesday or December third?
So, you got it on Monday then?
Is that a Monday?
Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday. Tuesday, okay, it's Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay.
Would you, do you have to be down there Monday night? I mean, is that week?
No, I think I can go down because it's in the afternoon. Maybe I gotta go Monday. I'll find out.
I'm open the entire week.
We can Monday the second, I mean, I can't make it.
Yeah.
You want the second?
You want the 2nd?
You're not gonna, you're not gonna want to come the day or the day after that surgery. No, I was told that the day after is not good. No. I've had that surgery, I wouldn't go.
Yeah, we'll have to raise our hand that day to vote.
Both hands. Jumping next.
What time?
What time we thinking here?
The 2nd.
It's a Monday.
That part I can...
If you want 5 o'clock, I mean, that is whatever you guys...
5:00.
5:00 PM?
Is that good?
Yep.
All right.
Okay, the next thing on, I have two more things. Sage Lee called me, I don't remember, roughly a week ago with a question on graduation pictures. And I said I would have to look at the contract because in the past we have had language in the contract that said whoever did school pictures, you know, had a right to do graduation. We did not put that in our RFP. And so the question is, what do we want to do for graduation pictures? And so there's no action on this right now, but there's a couple options we can do. One, at least the way I see it, we can put out a request if the board wants that. Meaning, you know, give us in essence a packet that you'd want. Last year, and if you recall, there was a change. The company that did it had two options. You could do the grip and grin, kind of like we've done for a lot of years. Or they could do a formal class picture with then a individual in cap and gown. Mr. Iverson took that to the group and the last year's class chose that. Yeah, it's different than, you know, historically has been done. We can ask the group what they would like as a starting point and then then go from there to see who would be interested and who would be not. And then the question is that I have for you, do you want to choose that? Do you want, I mean, the kids, you know, the senior class to choose? This is a little different, like...
What happens for other stuff for like homecoming?
Well, like prom and, well, prom, homecoming.
I think the class should choose the...
Yeah, the group kind of running those chooses.
Okay.
You know, and so I guess I'm just asking for direction. We're far enough out, we can do whatever, you know, is so desired. And I think it makes a difference if you want the grip and grin on possibly who may be interested. Or if it's, you know, I'm gonna call it last year's model, may be different. So I guess I think asking the class themselves first that question. And then from there, see who's interested. But do you want it to come back to you? Do you want that group to ballot and decide?
Well, I think that the group should definitely pick the, what they're going to do. The company side of it, I'm not so sure about. That, I guess, would be up for debate. But as far as how their pictures are gonna be set up, I think that should be up to them.
As we did last year, you know, the two options and, you know...
No, you're right, it probably does.
I guess maybe start with that and then figure out which way to work.
Because it probably does matter on who's gonna bet it based on what it is.
Well, correct, it can be done.
At least have an idea for that first.
Okay. I will get that. And the last thing is the community ed position. How do I want to start here? With Rachel leaving, I obviously were in need of a community ed director. And to my knowledge, no one on staff has that license, myself included. So I will contact, contact the Department of Ed and Licensing and see what options are out there. I don't, I'll be honest, they're not gonna shut us down as far as the community ed program. But we're gonna have to start looking. Obviously, we can post for a licensed position. I'm not hopeful anyone will have that license. I mean, unless it's just a coincidence, you know, even Rachel.
How long does that take to get?
I honestly don't know how many classes it takes, you know? And I don't remember, somehow Mr. Langen years ago, I don't think had it either and somehow got a, you know, variance or something to, you know, oversee the program while Rachel got, you know, license. So I will do my research.
Did Nardi do it for a year too?
I guess I don't remember for sure.
There's statutory limits on those. So you can do it for so long, right?
Well, but that is for a small, you know, like if we were small enough...
Yeah, when we were comparing salaries, I noticed that the superintendent was a community ed director in a couple different...
Correct. And if you're small enough, you don't need that license, meaning small enough school. We're not even close to that yet. But anyway, I guess I'm asking, we need to get someone, I guess what I'm gonna say is...
Just a posting out.
In an interim, A, or A, I guess I'm thinking an interim position. Or even, you know, post it for a full-time position. If no one comes, we need to get some, we have two weeks, so to speak, to start getting someone. Rachel's gonna, is very committed and is gonna keep going and getting as much programming set that she can, is willing to help, you know, with whatever she can. She's, you know, vested in the program moving on from where it is. But somehow we gotta get a body, at least someone in there getting some knowledge, you know, whether it's completely certified person or it's to finish the year. Once I find more, I need, I guess, permission to somehow get someone to start...
And taking a posting out there right away.
Correct. And see where we go from there.
Yeah, find out what the legal...
Well, we'll get through that, and very confident, they're not gonna shut, I mean, our preschool down and everything that, they're gonna work with us through that. But I guess I don't know what complete options are until, and who may be interested. And I don't know if there's the community ed representatives on the board are willing to kind of, you know, help guide, you know, some decisions. Like you say, we can post it as is for right now and see if we get a licensed person. If not, I want some language or people interested in becoming licensed, you know, to apply as well. I mean, because we need to get, you know, interested people. And like you say, my gut is, again, I hope there is someone licensed that's looking for a job and, you know, but I'm not overly confident. Does that make sense?
Well, hopefully you can look outside the box and try to figure out a more creative way to get someone because, as you said, it will be hard to find someone that's licensed. And for the salary that, you know, really should be attached to that with our community, you know, it's really too bad that that high of a, I don't know, the requirements for the degree is not really matched with the salary. I don't believe in our community.
I agree with that a little bit. You know, it does provide a good opportunity to reassess the direction that we want. If we want to take a look at community ed as a program from a school board perspective as like a whole, see if there's anything we would want to tweak when we find that position or what we can even do with the position. And maybe see, take that into consideration. Of course, I won't have, I don't have a suggestion until we find out, you know, what you find out, so...
What about student council?
Student council we posted too. Might have a person for that. She's actually been talking with some, you know, again, there may be multiple people step up, I don't know. I guess I'm, I think we'll have someone step up for that to at least, you know, get them through the year. Maybe longer, who knows? And the other piece is, you know, is the next person gonna be, you know, I don't want to say is crafty, but, you know, Rachel, her deal was to teach some classes. She had their background. There could be someone that has a vested interest and could be a good community ed director, but has a different set of skills, you know, and we're gonna have, you know, look at that as well, you know? She did painting classes, she did some classes with the kids, you know, that was part of her package deal. The next person, that's different, you know? They're maybe just more interested in finding people to do this stuff. Then that would change maybe what we could offer, you know, to people.
And is there a possibility of sharing a community ed director?
It's possible. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I had a quick question. Do we need to vote on both goals or is that something that just kind of moved forward and I didn't remember?
I mean, the three goals you picked up, those are some sub-points. And not to say there's other things that can't be done. Those were what I had kind of typed out as, I guess, my vision. I mean...
Just mark it down.
Just some more detail for my direction. I mean, do you want more things under there or something?
No, I just didn't know if we at the board need to vote on it. Because it had come up one night on an agenda and I didn't know if it needed to be voted on.
And technically, I mean, technically, there's not, I mean, if the board wants to. But, I mean, the three goals are set.
Well, can we do this to make it official then? And it's, we, this is, I mean, we knew what the goals were gonna be, but this is the first time with the most specifics. Can we just put it on the consent, or the consent...
Why don't I bring it next month?
Yeah. Committee reports, Community Ed Advisory Board. I suppose things are different right now. Okay, Rec Commission.
We met, I was on vacation, so I'm gonna let Terry, I know he went to it, so I'll let Terry. There was a couple things that came up that I wanted to talk about today. One thing, just for information, the mayor had talked about, there's three, right? There's three slots for the city council and two slots for the...
School board.
And then there's others. But he said he was gonna take to the city council that they drop one of their slots and have a at-large portion in the community. But the city, it would go through their city council.
So the mayor would appoint it like other committees would have to?
Yeah.
Okay.
But he said the committee appointments in the future, because I also asked that, is that it's gonna be more of a group effort, making sure they get a, you know, someone everybody would...
Well, I like the fact of making it even between the school board and the city, equal number of members. And I do like the idea of more at-large in the community.
I do, yeah. Also, there was a issue I just wanted to bring up to the school board. And Mike, I was gonna talk to you at the time, of course, I didn't do that. There was an issue with rec volleyball, the sixth graders. They wanted to go on a weekday and down to Vidette. And it was an unwritten rule, I guess is what you want to call it with the rec board that kids up to sixth grade don't go on all the town trips on a school night. There was a, a lot that was, got a lot of calls and people that weren't happy. Did you, yeah, I'm sure you...
I'm aware, yeah. And in fact, I mean, I only had one call from a parent. I was aware of the situation when it was going on. I actually called the parent once and had a conversation on that Friday, you know, as prior to it. It was like a Wednesday or Thursday, probably, you know, there was still time. And just kind of gave my two cents that we can revisit it, you know, come Monday. And did call, didn't get an answer. And I think maybe some of her questions were answered. I'm not saying she agreed, you know, with, but to be honest, that's, I think, where the Rec Commission is, is if you do it for one, you gotta, for the most part, be open. And so I think unfortunately, it came up and maybe now's the time it needs to come up and look at. I can't honestly speak to what other districts are doing, you know? And it is different going to Little Fork or Fort Francis. You know, those, I think, maybe have been done, you know, on weeknights.
Hockey has traveled to Lake of the Woods before the weekend.
And again, I can't speak. I know for the most part though, even 7th and 8th grade, Bill and I have talked numerous times. You know, years ago, 7th and 8th grade didn't do the schedule that they do now. The reason 7th and 8th grade, for the most part, does the schedule they do now is as all of the districts have gotten smaller, they never used to travel to high school. Buses were full for the most part. As a lot of us have gotten smaller, is we could take 8th grade, we could take 7th grade, save transportation costs, less vehicles on the road. And so most of the schools have done the same thing, as long as we have enough facilities. You know, and that's where we use back, you know, at least us use back, it's used Rainy River at times. Now, on the flip side, we've never, it's kind of morphed into, they go as many times. They used to, you know, take basketball. They maybe had six, eight games years ago out of town. Now they're running just about a 13-game, you know, whatever, varsity's going out of town. It's never been the question, is it? You know, some people would say it's not enough, some would say, my 7th grader, they're beat, you know, it's too much. I think the whole thing needs to be looked at. And again, I'm all in favor of athletics, but I just think before we go one way and all of a sudden now, you know, Lake of the Woods, can you go to Virginia on a weeknight? Can you go to Northwoods? Can you go to Hibby? You know, where it's a bigger piece than, you know, maybe next year we have something where they can go a certain... I don't know what the answer is, you know? There was another piece that the regular coach or coaches weren't available. You asked someone who's gonna coach them, you know, there were...
I think there was a co-coach or whatever, assistant coach that was gonna coach.
But I think, I agree, I guess personally, I agree with rec that if it's something they want to entertain, should look across the sports and figure out what's right. What about 5th grade? What about, you know?
And we're willing to do that.
I issue, you know, and this is just my personal opinion, is I think education is more important for kids, especially going up to 6th grade than athletics. And they start running, my son was running 7th and 8th grade all the time in basketball, for instance. And he just struggled getting his, you know, getting his work done. They're gone two nights a week, sometimes in the afternoons. He got it done, but it obviously put the sports ahead of education. And I, as much as I did sports when I was in high school, when they're that young, I do not support school nights personally. And I, as on the rec board, I also would say that.
Yeah, and that's all said, Terry. You did a good job.
It is important to do it the same for everybody though, you know? Regardless, right?
So hockey is done separately, they're not part of the rec. That really wasn't our...
I had a very long, I had a very long conversation.
That wasn't brought up to, it's never brought up, so they have their own board, so...
Yeah, I have a very long, I had a very long conversation that night with everybody involved because I have a 6th grade girl. So my, thanks to my wife, I was thrown right into the smack dab of that chat. Yeah, it was fun, let me tell you. I had a great time.
Worth, oh, okay, yeah, so you know.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No, that's plenty, I think.
Thank you so much. Terry Murray. Okay, now we will be going into a closed session.